This meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, August 10th, 2020, and the time is 7:00 PM. We are present this evening in the Northfield High School Media Center in accordance with Governor Walz's Stay Safe Plan. This room has been set up in accordance with the plan's social distancing guidelines. In addition, all those present at the meeting will be wearing face coverings for the entire duration of the meeting. Board member Ellen Iverson will be attending tonight's board meeting via teleconference in accordance with Minnesota State Statute 13D.021. Also attending via teleconference are Aaron Bailey, Director of Community Education; Hope Langston, Director of Instructional Services; Val Murdistorff, Director of Finance; elementary school principals Nancy Antoin from Bridgewater; Sam Richardson from Greenville Park; and Scott Sanus from, excuse me, Sibley. This meeting is being livestreamed. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. So it's very nice to be back together again. So thank you for everyone for being here. Dr. Hillman, there were some items in the table file.
Yes, this evening we just had a couple of items in the table file. We had some personnel appointments. We had a gift agreement. And then we also have a proposed school calendar change based on a discussion that we had at the July 13th board meeting focusing on family meetings during what would have been the first week of school.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there's no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are, we have an approved agenda. We'll move on to public comment. We now have an opportunity for residents, business, property owners, parents, students, and employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. To accommodate the public comment portion of our meeting, we made available on the district's website the ability for the public to submit feedback to the board via email by 5:00 PM today. All submissions that follow the district policy regarding public comment will be read now by myself, board chair. We have two public comment submissions. I will begin with the first, which was submitted by Rich Graves. He is a parent of two children in Northfield Schools. "I have two children in school. I plan to attend at least the first half hour of tonight's meeting. It's potentially dangerous but also important. I'm writing to express strong support for high-quality, 100% remote instruction for as many students as possible in order to save lives. Don't just buy it and forget it. Dedicate staff who believe in online instruction. I understand that given time pressure, this will be exceptionally difficult. I also support in-person instruction for the children of critical workers and for other students who need in-person care, including emotional and behavioral disorder students. To the maximum extent possible, I urge use of a homeroom to approach, homeroom approach to minimize cross-contingent. When you switch subjects, try to move the teachers, not the students. I strongly oppose the compromise of some days virtual, some days physical instruction. This will have the effect of scattering students across a variety of daycare options and could lead to more cross-contingent than either 100% physical or 100% virtual instruction. I understand the impulse to compromise. Fight it. This is the worst option. If expert epidemiologists' advice supports compromise, then by all means, listen to them, not me. But just don't compromise." Okay? Our second submission was from Claudia Gonzalez George and Robert Coleman. "As community members and parents of children in the Northfield School District, we wish to take this opportunity to express our gratitude to all of the teachers, staff, administrators, and school board members who have worked tirelessly over the course of the last few months to prepare for a school year unlike any other. We understand that the constantly changing nature of this pandemic has required those involved in the planning process to continually redesign plans as this virus forces a radical remaking of what education looks like. We also recognize the anxiety and stress facing families and staff members as the first day of school approaches. Let us all practice kindness and flexibility as we move into uncharted territory. Let us continue to find ways to help and support each other. Once again, thank you, Northfield Schools. As parents, we are proud to send our children here." Okay, those were the two public comment submissions, so we can move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I have one announcement this evening. Kids in Northfield are celebrating today because they will soon have a great new place to play. For months, Northfield Public Schools Community Education, Northfield Promise, Strive Together, and Kaboom, the nonprofit organization focused on ending play space inequity, have worked together to increase, to increase access to play spaces for local kids by creating a new kid-designed playground that broke ground on August 5th. It will be located at the new Northfield Community Education Center at 700 Lincoln Parkway and gives kids an incredible place to play, close to where they live and learn, an opportunity that's often hard to achieve. We're excited that this incredible play space will spark hope and allow hundreds of kids to just be kids. So we are thrilled to have that playground installed, and there's some photos I saw from it over the weekend, and we're just so very grateful for that generous Kaboom grant, $250,000. So a very nice new playground behind the Community Education Center.
Excellent, thank you. Is there anything else board members would like to add? Okay. We will move on now to our items for discussion and report. And again, as mentioned, presenting via teleconference are elementary school principals Nancy Antoin, Sam Richardson, and Scott Sanus. Their presentation is Elementary Schools' Continuous Improvement Plan. Welcome.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. As the slides are pulled up here, Scott Sanus from Sibley Elementary, Nancy Antoin from Bridgewater Elementary, and I am Sam Richardson from Greenville Park. And we are presenting this year in a different format together. As soon as the decision was made that schools would be closed in Minnesota and our students and staff shifted to distance learning, all of the planning and preparation to make that adjustment, we did that together. And instead of having different plans at different schools or different options for students, it was all a Northfield Public Schools Elementary Plan for our students. And so we felt it appropriate at this time, in the middle of a pandemic and planning for a new school year, to present collaboratively our goals and school improvement plan for 2020 and 2021. If we move to the first slide, as always, you know, we would love to see all students working collaboratively together, and we know that we are in a different time. And so as we plan for the upcoming year, the school improvement planning, the intent is to provide clear goals and to inspire action. Our efforts will be in a different channel this year as we look towards responding to what we learned from distance learning this past spring and anticipating the school year to come and knowing that we have many factors to take into account as we prepare for the upcoming school year. So as we're looking forward and all the work that we've been doing this summer, we continue to look at Northfield Elementary Schools and are working collectively to make the best decisions for our youngest students in Northfield Public Schools. So each of us will be taking a different portion of the presentation, and Scott Sanus will be up next with a look back.
Good evening, everyone. As we, as we look to review our 2019-20 school improvement goals, as which with each of the last several school years, all three elementary schools established goals in the areas of literacy, math, and behavior. A new goal, measuring parent satisfaction, was created based on feedback we received in the family survey. So right before the stay-at-home order and the closing of the state schools, we were in the process of preparing our students to return from spring break and begin taking the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments in April and then the math assessments in May. The historic closure of schools due to COVID-19 interfered with data collection that would allow us to evaluate progress towards school goals, so we don't have information on that to share with you tonight. Nancy?
Sue, go back to Sam.
Oh, Sam. Right.
So one of the most important things that we have been living with and reviewing are the key learnings from our distance learning in the spring. Parent survey feedback, staff survey feedback, a post-school year reflection day with, under Dr. Hillman's leadership, to really unearth what were the key components that worked for students, what were the areas that we wanted to focus on more moving forward. As we looked at our reporting and assessment for this really unique time, we created a few different new measures, and one was student engagement. And we learned very quickly that for some students, distance learning, it worked pretty well. Students were able to, the timing and the technology did not get in the way, and they were able to maybe find someone at home to help them if they were getting stuff, or they were very good at advocating and working with the teacher. For other students, this presented a challenge, and there were a number of different reasons parents shared, staff learned, and students even shared that were getting in the way of the distance learning. When we looked at the student engagement results, we saw that there was a difference. And for students of color, 43% of students demonstrated limited or partial engagement, and that compared with 16% of white students. And so as we focus on equity as one of our continuing pillars throughout all that we do, this was something that just wasn't acceptable, and a lot of our work has been to determine with teacher teams and with our administrative team and reaching out to partners as well, how can we improve engagement, whether it's in-person, hybrid, distance learning? This is going to be a really key component moving forward in the time that we are in.
We also took a look at how we were assessing students, and teacher assessment of grade level performance was, was much different. Teachers indicated that 43% of the students of color were reading at grade level compared to 75% of our white students. In math, teachers indicated that 49% of our students of color were performing at grade level compared to 80% of our white students.
So we looked at some of the tools that we were using through the elementary that we were using, CSO, Schoology, and Zoom. Many parents indicated that those tools were difficult for them along with internet connectivity. Our technology team, along with Hope Langston, did an amazing job to reach out to families and make sure that our students were able to connect, and internet was not, was not the piece that was holding them back. So really appreciate the work that they did. But all of this data led us to plan a technology training for parents beginning this 2021 school year. And I guess at this time, we'd kind of like to share a couple of examples of things that really worked well during distance learning. I know I talked to one of my special ed teachers, and this person had nearly all the students on all the time, and many times, parents were on the Zoom call along with the student, and that worked out extremely well. Another one was our community partnership with the YMCA. We had a few of our students that were at the YMCA, and I think, I thought they just did just an amazing job, again, showing how the low class size and that small group really helped those, those kids keep up with their learning, if not advancing their learning. So they got a lot of individualized help. Now let's Sam and staff share some other positive examples of what happened during distance learning.
Yeah, thank you, Nancy. We, with the student engagement component, very early, we noticed that there were students participating in different ways, and some were participating more fully in the distance learning. Our student support team, which was comprised of school workers, school psychologists, behavior coaches, and we also brought in our instructional coaches, and we looked at who the students were who were having difficulty logging in. Like Nancy talked about, it could have been a technology situation. For some, it was multiple students trying to do Zoom calls at the same time in a house that's very difficult for, just noise and concentration. Also, there was lots to manage for families, especially families who were working from home or were working outside the home, and some students even had to take care of younger siblings. Students that were also learning English as their second language sometimes needed support or the families. And so the student support team did an amazing job of creating a method for tracking student communication that the school had with families, and then also enlisting help from English language teachers, the classroom teacher, and then growing up healthy staff and healthy community initiative staff were able to sometimes create translated documents, make, you know, language translations that would help parents to teach their children or to help them log in. And this partnership was highly encouraging and very successful to increase engagement for those families that needed our help the most.
Yes, and many of our parents were present for the daily Zoom sessions during the stay-at-home order and reached out to us and shared, you know, how much they appreciated listening to the quote-unquote "teacher talk" during distance learning, and how well teachers connected with students even in that format. One example I have is our Core Plus Language Group that met with, that met at 10:00 PM daily during distance learning and was really truly a bright spot for so many of our students and families in the Low Incidence Program and the Level 3 NV Program. And the Language Group was led by Lydia Gillicson and Melanie Klein, along with special, a few other special education teachers, and included collaboration from our speech pathologists, our social worker, our school psychologist, occupational therapist, our physical therapist, and several others. And we heard from families that this Language Group was a daily highlight for their students during distance learning at a time when they really needed it.
We can move forward, I believe, to the next slide as we take a look at 2020 and 2021. Planning for school improvement goals in the areas of literacy and math is difficult this year. We know that if students are in our schools, we certainly can, can use some of the assessments that we have traditionally implemented with all of our students. And if that is not the case, or that we do have some other options, you know, but we wanted to make sure that we were able to have measurable goals that we would be realistically able to assess. So in the area of literacy, working with Hope Langston and working with our teachers, one of our goals is to look at helping students become more fluent readers using the DIBBLES Assessment. And while we don't have a baseline from last year to compare to, we would like to take where students come in and, and the percentage of students reading fluently to see an increase of 5% from fall to spring. One of the key pieces of the DIBBLES is that it can be delivered whether in-person or online, so we're going to have an opportunity to do that with students in whatever model we are working in. For math, in the area of kindergarten, we typically look at number identification and counting, and so in this goal, a common goal that we use is number identification. 90% of students identifying 30 random numbers between 1 and 100 correctly by the spring of 2021, and we believe that's a goal that we can work on with our students throughout the year in, in all settings. And then also, a continuing goal that we have for the past few years has been to look at our everyday math unit assessments, and great work has been done by teams to align their, their teaching and make sure that the unit assessments are aligned with standards for state of Minnesota, and our goal this year will be 85% of students scoring 30% or above on those everyday math or unit assessments. One of the keys at this time, we know, and a big focus that we have talked about from beginning of distance learning is students' social emotional health and social emotional well-being, and we're going to talk about that with Nancy next because it's so important.
Okay, for the social emotional learning needs of our students, we use a data tracking system called SABERS, and SABERS stands for Social, Academic, Emotional Behavior Risk Streamer. So we're looking at, we're looking to see which of our students are at risk. And so our goal here would be to have, to increase the percentage of students moving from at-risk in the fall to not-at-risk in the spring, again, using that, using composite data from that SABERS report. And this is something that is tracked by the classroom teachers, and they give, they give all the input on this, making sure that they look at the needs of each of the individual students in their classroom. So each individual student is tracked on this, and then our behavior coach, along with our, our student support team, will take a look at all the results from this information.
Okay, let me have Scott.
Yes. The family engagement goal, this goal is similar to something we did last year, where to make connections with families. Something we got better at this past year was, was making more of those connections and then also tracking those positive communications with families and making sure that every student had at least two positive calls, emails, or postcards. So our goal for this upcoming school year is 100% of our students will receive two positive phone calls, emails, or notes from staff members prior to the end of our fourth quarter, the end of the school year. Having done this through year, we know it works. Students and parents are very appreciative of, of that positive communication, and many times, we get a follow-up message back from families saying how much they appreciate it. So it's fun, it's fun to be a part of. Our employee engagement goal, as administrators in the district, we found that rounding conversations have been very effective and informative, and many of those conversations can be the initial spark to making positive changes in the district. We asked the following, or we asked the following questions during the rounding conversations. Number one, what is working well for you? Number two, are there any individuals who have been especially helpful to you whom we should recognize? Number three, do you have the resources to do your job? Number four, is there anything we could do better as a school or a district? Number five, this was a new one this past year for me, where in your work are you finding meaning and purpose? And number six, are you feeling supported? So our goal is that rounding conversations will be conducted with 100% of our licensed and non-licensed staff by the end of the third quarter. Our anti-racism goal, a list of culturally appropriate resources will be provided to grade-level teachers to use with students during their social emotional learning time to ensure that every child feels represented. Staff and students will address 100% of racist behaviors, comments, et cetera, within one school day, and we will work together to support and stand up for others.
This year, we have two other areas that are pillars of our work for continuous improvement as a school district. Stewardship is, is one of those goal areas, and I think at this time, we know how important managing our resources in a responsible way is for not only to provide, you know, for the health and safety of our students, but also to continue to provide high-quality instruction and to be responsive to our students and families' needs. But through this, our, our goal is to maintain our budgets for staffing and, and for our buildings throughout all of this planning for the return to school. Also partnerships, while they have changed in their proximity, our community school, for example, did not meet in-person in the spring, but we continue to value our partnerships and connections this year. We would like to continue the involvement of our kindergarten through third-grade teachers with the Move Five Initiative, maintain close connections with Northfield Promise, and keep all of our, our teams working together to help increase student proficiency in reading. And then, as we have explained already in this presentation, many of the keys to successful distance learning or learning in different ways in the time of COVID have required community partners and partnerships. And so we will continue to work with organizations in our community to make sure that 100% of our students and families have the learning resources needed to participate, whether that be hotspots for Wi-Fi, whether that be devices, or if that means basic school supplies or other resources we might not even have thought of that could help remove barriers for learning.
And speaking of removing barriers, I look at this next coming school year as a huge opportunity. You know, we're not, we're not going, we're not going back to September of 2019. That's not possible. And in between September of 2019 and today, many things have happened, and the things that have, that have happened have left us with many opportunities. I look at some of the things that's coming into this, this school year, and I realize that our, our boundary, the boundaries that we've operated within before are no longer, no longer need to be there. And I think that we've got, we have many opportunities to actually serve our students better than what we did before. When I look at some of the, the things that, even some of the programs we don't have in Northfield, this is an opportunity for us to go out and partner with other schools, other, other community partners, and actually offer those, those items to our students. So I'm really excited and happy to see these opportunities in front of us and look forward to doing that. So we look at some of the strategies and the assessments that we're looking at for this fall. Obviously, with literacy and math, we've got teams working with Hope right now that are looking at our four essentials and determining what are the four essentials that we need our students to learn. Obviously, right now, if I look at, if I look in terms of what I think our core for our students to learn, our students, students need to learn how to read. That is imperative. They need to learn how to write. They need to learn numeracy, and they need to learn skills on how to get along. Everything else can be wrapped around those four skills that we can provide our students. Again, we have our constructional models, models that we are making adaptations with, so we can provide those better to our students. With literacy, we've got our reading corner tutors that are in place for kindergarten through third grade, and our intervention supports both in the area of literacy and math. Behavior, coming, when the students return to fall, return to school this fall, whether it be in-person, hybrid, or distance learning, we need to really work on building that community with them. Again, building those relationships is really important. That's the foundation of anything else we do. We are still going to continue using our second step curriculum with small groups for social emotional learning, and we'll have our interventions groups that will meet with our behavior coaches. Again, we have partnerships with our coaches, our behavior team, and Fernbrook Mental Health, and that has worked out extremely well, having them onsite. And then we've got our, our new student support team model, especially with our instructional services team. Again, looking at parent satisfaction, we'll, we'll, again, have, as Mr. Sanus was talking about, sending those positive postcards, sending those home, and looking at the parent survey results. So again, we've got a lot of great things that I think we've got on the horizon. We've got, again, things, opportunities. Yes, they require a lot of work, but I think that we've got a lot of great things that we can look forward to with our students, and I think we've got a better opportunity to look at more individualized learning, sort of meeting the kids where they're at.
Mr. Sanus?
I have to unmute myself there. We thank you for the opportunity to present jointly tonight, and we now have time for your questions or comments.
Excellent, thank you. So board members, questions or comments? Amy?
Thanks to all three of you. Boy, my voice is funny in this mask. I am happy to hear your report, and I also am happy to hear your enthusiasm going forward in a difficult year. And I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about what challenges you see ahead with the COVID situation as school starts? with the COVID situation as school starts?
I would say the biggest challenge that we see is the fact that we, we don't know what our numbers are going to be from day to day. And it'd be, and it'd be helpful if we knew, if we actually had a baseline for knowing who has COVID, who doesn't, and, and who would prevent the spread of that. But that's the, I would say that's our biggest challenge is not knowing. And the fact of the matter is, we don't want to, we, we don't want any, any student nor staff member to get sick. We don't. And, and so knowing that that's our goal, it's really, it's really hard when we have a disease that we, we don't have, we don't have control over in our country yet.
I'm going to ask Ellen, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I'd like to echo what Amy said and thank you for your collaboration on the report and your leadership. I was interested in the anti-racism goal. And if you could talk a little bit about who's going to be involved in determining sort of the set of resources and a little bit more about the timeline of, as you know, a parent, when they might see this start to get incorporated in the social emotional learning. And then in terms of being able to act upon it, the second part of the goal, again, you know, a parent perspective is how might this look different? But I really applaud that goal, and so I'm just really interested in, in your thoughts on it. Thank you.
I can, I can jump in on this as well. Bottom line, with the second part of the goal, with addressing comments and, and actions that take place, there is no, there is no room for racism in our district, in our state, in our, it, it, there's, there's no excuse for it anywhere. So that's why it's, it's not going to be, well, I didn't, I didn't know that was a racist comment. No, it needs to be addressed right away. And then we, we need to be, we need to take an active role and stand up and say, we're, we're going to be, we're going to be not racist, not that, oh, we don't support racism. That, there are two different things, one is passive, one is active. We are taking the active route because enough is enough. And our students have faced enough in terms of negative comments from other people. And none of us have the choice of what race we're born under. None of, none of us have a choice of our ethnicity. And given that piece, now it's one thing, if you think that, oh my goodness, you don't like what I'm wearing today. Well, I can change that, you know? And there's, there are things I can change about myself, my race and ethnicity. There's nothing I can do to change that, so therefore, that is, that's, that's off, that's off the table. And if we hear things like that, we are going to address that. We're going to work with our behavior coaches to look at developing that list of resources so that our teachers have, have resources they can use with their students. So that'll take place through the beginning months of school. But again, the addressing things will, will take place the right way.
Thank you.
And other questions? Tom.
Thanks for an excellent report and really good comments. And sorry that this year, with all the new buildings and the upgrades to the facilities, we can't have all these great celebrations and, and start from that, that, from that get-go. I was wondering about the part where you talked about 43% of the students of color demonstrated limited or partial engagement. Are there underlying reasons to that? And is there anything that we can do to ameliorate that?
Well, I think one of the things that stood out to me, and I think to the other principals as well, was that each family brought a unique set of circumstances to this time of, of disruption and transition. And so, like I mentioned in my story about the collaboration between our general education teachers and our English language teachers and, and HCI, for some, it was multiple children who were trying to access their home Wi-Fi at the same time. And for others, it was a language component where if resources were translated into a different language, it helped the family, helped their children. For others, still, there were two parents, both trying to work from home and parent and help their young children. And so there had to be maybe some adjustments to timing. So it really, it really did vary. And I think knowing the students as well as our teachers have gotten to know them and continuing to help, have partners help us when they know some more about the families, that, that has been a, a component that has really helped us target those, those students. So I, I think the answer is yes, there are things that we can do and it's some of the things that I just mentioned, but it, it seems to be different for, for some of our families. So that's why we really want to connect with these families, build strong relationships, and get to know how we can help them best.
All right, and then, so technology was maybe also part of the equation for that, or in general. And I'm thinking that we've got the technology under control and everything's covered in that?
Yes, Tom, I can address that. I, as you know, we had been one-to-one with iPads for every student in grades three through 12. And we were one-to-one, or one-to-two, one device for every two students in kindergarten through second grade. You may remember, this board approved a lease to increase our technology access to one-to-one in kindergarten through second grade this summer. Those devices have been leased, they have, I know that the cases are actually here, I just saw them in the back. The devices have been shipped, we expect to take, take those in the next few days and then begin that process of making sure that we're ready to provide families with that expanded access. We also work very closely with HCI, and we continue to work closely with HCI to ensure that every family has access, not just access to internet, but has access to internet that's of a capable speed. So as you know, we had a pretty sophisticated partnership with three vendors last spring. We'll move ahead with partnerships with a couple of vendors. So we'll continue with hotspots from T-Mobile. We're also looking at hotspots from AT&amp;T, having two different providers that can provide, you know, different kinds of services in different locations, and then continuing the partnership that we have with Charter Spectrum within the community. So we are working, Director of Technology Services, Kim Briskie, is working with a number of community partners to be prepared for any kind of distance learning or hybrid option that might happen this fall.
Good, great.
And I, I think, Tom, I can also just make mention too is that the other part of that is not just the devices, right? It's about making sure that families have an understanding of what the tools are and what they will use. And we've talked about that, Nancy mentioned that that was one of the reasons that we have really pushed for the family meetings. Our 60-plus staff members that came together this summer to plan for this fall really felt that that was a top priority. Tonight, I'm going to ask you to officially change the calendar so that we're able to do that. And part of those meetings will be talking about the technology and making sure that families know what they have access to, teach them how to use some of the initial systems, and how do they get help when they need it? So it's not just about the equipment, right? It's also about making sure families know how to access it and use it. And our staff really, as you know, you've seen, they really stepped it up during the emergency distance learning last spring. And we anticipate, you know how we operate with continuous improvement. If we have distance learning this fall, we expect it's going to be much more improved. And I'm talking about the kind of, again, having to shift the distance learning, not the portage all the time online option.
Yeah, okay, I figured it'd be the, that'd be the case. And then just one other question, and it's more, maybe one more deep question. You're talking about old boundaries aren't needed and the way we, maybe the way we've been doing things can be thought about differently. And so for some students, they did well at, at learning at, at home, and some students do better learning in school. And so we, we sort of had a social experiment this, this spring. And as we look through the, the, the data and the, talk about how, how it all happened, will there be things you can, can look at that maybe worked well at, at home? And what it was that engaged the students at home that doesn't, or is maybe missing in the classroom? And maybe from just looking at, then the, the students that didn't, maybe engaged well at home and engaged better at school? To try and figure out what it is, what, what things work, what things don't, what are in common, what things need to be changed? And now we have this, this chance that we can do that because we got a restart.
Absolutely, and I think that, I, like, like I said, we have some opportunities. So a student who did really well via distance learning, their parents can choose to do distance learning for, for the year if they wish to do, wish to do that. But again, like I said, we can, we can bring in resources from other places. We don't have to, it's not about, oh, I wonder if I can find that at Breeville or at Sibley or at Bridgewater. No, I can say, huh, I wonder, I wonder if there's another person that, you know, in, in another, in their community or another state or another country that could help us with that. One of the things I'm hoping is like our Companeros program, for example. I'm hoping he gains more conversational skills in the area of Spanish. And again, we don't have to rely, you know, rely on just the, just, we don't have to rely on just the skills of our teachers. And those skills are really good, but at the same time, they could get, they could get that exposure to someone who's a native Spanish speaker in Spain or in Colombia or in Mexico, for example. And that's where we can really pull out of their, their conversational Spanish skills and lead them to become more fluent in Spanish. That's just, just one example, but I, and I think, I think there's so many areas that we can, we can tap into. And I would like, you know, we might have to, if I've got a, if I, I know that I've got a kiddo that's reading, that's reading at a college level. And this, this is going to, this is going to push me to, to look, look for the resources that are at his reading level, but still at his developmental level. So that's where I see the boundaries, the boundaries are only as big as we make them. And if we just, if we can break down those boundaries, we can find other resources that, again, meet the needs of our students. And I also would like to say that our parents through distance learning, I thought, did a fantastic job. You know, that this, this was, this was a challenge, this was a challenge for, for them as it was for us. And none of this was expected. And I thought our, I thought our families really stepped up and they were true partners. And I can't complain at all about our families because I, I was just so impressed. And, you know, they, they would, they'd ask good questions. And they would, they would come and email you at different times, day or, or night, asking for, asking for assistance, asking for people's help. Our teachers, many of our teachers became tech support, and that was never, that was never expected. But they became tech support for many of our families. But I, again, I think our, our families and our teachers, I thought, stepped up and did a fantastic job. Everyone looking, looking to try to meet the needs of our students.
Another example for Tom would be the typical school day, you know, runs on a time-based system. And teachers noted that for some students, they needed more time or different time of the day to complete assignments. And the distance learning provided opportunities to do that through technology, either completing something, you know, with other materials that were non-digital and then taking a photo or a video to share their, the evidence of their learning. And I know in the time that the teachers were gathered together to reflect on distance learning, there were several different options that they had either learned to do or had received positive feedback from students and families that they wanted to continue in the classroom. And many of those were things that allowed students to work at their own personal level, to do something at their own personal timing, and, and maybe to, to show what they know in a, in a different way than the teacher even thought. So that collaboration with teachers, I know there were definitely some great examples where teachers were very flexible in helping students learn the way that they did best.
And you know, one of the best things some of our teachers did is they held parent meetings. When we first launched distance learning, parent Zoom meetings. So the parents could learn how to use Zoom and work with Zoom. And they could also ask any questions that they had and, and set up situations where there may be some special circumstances, as Sam was referencing. If the student is doing, you know, their homework at, at 5:00 PM from 5:00 to 7:00, the teacher could work with those students during that time.
Thank you. So, you know, once the COVID is over, if, hopefully, it'll be sort of an exciting time to look back at what we've experienced and learned and see what new things we can incorporate in the classroom. And I think that it'll just be exciting for the teachers and the students to have flexibility and opportunities to learn because that's been ultimately what we want. Thank you.
Excellent. No.
In your presentation, 2021 School Improvement Plans, under literacy, you spoke of reading influence, reading fluency based on the DIBBLES assessment. Can you explain the DIBBLES assessment to me, please?
Sure. The DIBBLES assessment is a short set of passages that students read and they are given a score for a timed passage. They get the words correct per minute, and that allows the teacher to assess their reading, you know, fluency at that specific grade level. And they can adjust the level if they need to, but we typically look at that grade level so that we can do a comparison and track their growth. So this, the DIBBLES assessment typically is not looking at the total picture of all the different skills that a reader needs, but it's one way to identify students who may need more assistance, identify students like Nancy mentioned who may need additional challenge or materials that are enriching for them. And it's a, something that we are, as a district, familiar with at the classroom level, at the intervention level, and has been helpful that way to, you know, to give, to give us a, a chance to, have some visitors, visitors to the new Greenbelt Park. And it gives us a chance to monitor our student progress, both in-person and digitally. So if the student's there, they can read a passage with an adult. If they're not in-person, they can look online and do the same thing that way.
Can I jump in, Sam, and just add to that? One thing about the DIBBLES assessment, it is, it is one of four assessments that is recommended by MDE for that dyslexia screener. And in kindergarten and first grade and the beginning of second grade, it does a really great job of measuring those critical foundational skills, which we know all students need if they are going to go on and become proficient readers. So it's a, it's a screener that's approved by MDE and will help us with our dyslexia needs and requirements. And it's a quick, efficient way to screen all of our kids.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Jeff?
Yes, thank you for your reports. I'm just wondering, just out of curiosity, in a sense, maybe under family engagement, employee engagement, obviously, number one is, you know, safety for students, families, and employees. And this whole idea of transportation, with all the restrictions and things going on out there, you know, what are your comments about things that you really feel confident about, you know, people showing up to your buildings and being able to release them? And what do you think that you're, you know, going to do well to begin with? And then what are going to be some of the challenges?
Well, I, I think the greatest challenge, especially at our level, is the social distancing, you know, of our elementary kiddos. And, and, you know, the, I was on our district logistics team and we talked a lot about transportation at that time, you know, families sitting together, students separating on the bus. We also talked about students entering and exiting the same door. So, you know, we'll have all of our grade levels come in the, the school from, from different doors to try to limit, you know, exposure to students from other, of their grades. Sam and Nancy and I still have to meet. We had some, some dialogue, technology dialogue this morning about how we are going to run our specialist classes, PEE, music, art, and science this year. So we will pick up that conversation, I'm guessing, later on this week and probably even more so after a week from today when we have some, some guidance as to how we will be kicking off the, the school year. But I think social distancing is, is one of the things that I'm most concerned about with elementary, elementary students. But I will say, I've been in the Bridges Decay program a couple times since it started. And, you know, we have our incoming kindergarteners in the Bridges program who are having no problem whatsoever with the masks they're wearing. And as Gretchen Hyall pointed out to me, you know, they're coming in and this is their first run at it, and this is what's normal to them right now. and this is their first run at it, and this is what's normal to them right now. So we look for those kinds of situations, those positive situations playing out as we move forward. And if we have, you know, negative situations that come up where we need to make adjustments, we certainly will.
Thank you.
Excellent question. Thank you. I just had one, yeah, two questions. Just wanted to get some feedback on how the closing conferences went with families.
I can jump in right away and just say that the closing conferences went extremely well. Many of our teachers went to each home, and, you know, they stood outside. They socially distanced. They dropped off any materials they needed to drop off. And, you know, if it was a kindergarten graduation certificate, they passed that on and, you know, took a photo of the student. So there was a very positive end to the end of the school year with those closing conferences. And some of our teachers did it via Zoom, and others did it the way I just explained. And then I'll also say that we staggered our fifth grade graduation. We did a Zoom graduation. We had our fifth grade teachers and a few other specialist teachers and others who wanted to be here. It wasn't a large group, but we had a 15-minute segment for each fifth grade class where they could drive up, remain in their vehicles, get their materials, get their certificate. And, you know, our staff that was here, you know, would cheer for them as they went through. And it was just a fun experience and a fun culminating experience for those fifth graders who, you know, didn't get to return for their graduation.
We found a similar positive result with students feeling very honored that the teacher would take time to talk to just them instead of the entire class and to be able to have individual conversations to reflect on what just happened with the move from in-person to distance learning. And then the upcoming summer, teachers were able to encourage. I had one teacher share with me that in their closing conversation, the student and the parent talked about how they were going to stay connected with some of the learning apps that had been helpful for them. So it launched some students into a positive summer, even as they shifted gears to being more away from the regular Zoom meetings.
I think some of our students are actually still connected with their teacher through some of the projects that they've been working on. So ours went very smooth as well, lots of smiles, lots of tears on behalf of the student and the teacher as well. The group that I felt that we had a lot of tears with was our fifth grade group, will be in mind of sixth grade. So it would have been nice if I hadn't had them here in person, but there wasn't any way we could do that. But we did a lot of air hugs that day, and it was great to see them with the graduation. And we're looking forward to great things from them. But the conferences and graduation together went very well.
Yes, Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I just want to, I just am thrilled tonight. And you imagine, we've been moving pretty quickly lately with a lot of really urgent things. And as I've been sitting here listening to this outstanding elementary school principal team, I'm filled with pride because who would have thought we would have common goals at the elementary school? Now, I want to be really clear. We're not saying, you know, that each elementary cannot have its own autonomy. But Tom talked about one of the improvements that are coming out of this situation. Right here is one of them. The intense collaboration that has had to happen. You are seeing a combined school improvement plan tonight. That is not something I think many of us thought we would see, right? I mean, as I look at my elementary principals on Zoom, and I just could not be more proud of Nancy, Scott, and Sam, the way that they have developed as a team, the way that they look at every Northfield elementary student as a future raider, and is that we're all working together to build the skills across the system regardless of where you're going to elementary school. The goals are similar. The approaches are similar. Of course, each building has its own character and its own culture. But tonight is a huge step forward, in my opinion, to have this collaborative presentation. It was awesome. I'm so proud. And I want to point out to board members, you may remember last year, we had talked about doing a little bit of a different scorecard. And that was something that was not able to be completed before the end of the year. But if you notice the way that this year's school improvement plans are formatted, they are formatted with four strategic commitments in mind. So if you looked at the actual report that was provided in your packet, you saw three goals under the strategic commitment of people. We are about people. We're a people business. You saw things about learner outcomes. You saw things about stewardship, and you saw things about partnerships. And that is the new approach to school improvement planning, to making sure that every building is looking at its goals, regardless of whether it's in elementary, middle school, high school, the ALC, community education. Everyone is looking at these clusters, these strategic commitments, as a way to make sure that we're all swimming in the same direction, and we are all trying to move the entire system rather than just pockets of it. So you're going to see that, I think, that this is a big step forward. Of course, there's uncertainty about some of the goals, but I hope that you notice the difference in the school improvement planning approach. So thank you, Nancy, Sam, and Scott. And I do want to point out, Sam is sitting in his new office at 500 Lincoln Parkway. So we did take ownership of that building last week. And so you can see, he's got a window behind him. And of course, Nancy is sitting in her office that we opened in December. And Scott is sitting across the hall from his office because that area, his office isn't being renovated, but the rest of the office is. So everybody's got a little something going on. Well done. Great job, elementary principals.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would just like, on behalf of the board, to echo Dr. Hillman's comments. And really, one of the great things, lots of great things happening tonight. We're all here together, and we have our amazing elementary principals in front of us so that we can personally thank you and commend you for the phenomenal job that you have done since March and that you will continue to do. And I thought about the end of the school year and how exhausted you had to have been. And then you had to turn around and start thinking about September, which wasn't far away, and the myriad of details and challenges that were before you and your work on all of the different task forces, your leadership, your efforts. Everything you've done has just been so appreciated by the board. And we know it took a personal toll on each of you. There was a lot of exhausted days and nights of pressure and stress, and we just cannot thank you enough for your incredible work.
Thank you. Happy to serve.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, all.
Okay, we will move on now to policy committee recommendations and handbook review. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so this evening, you will see that you have several handbooks within your packet, the talk-through. We have the Early Ventures packet. We also are, excuse me, the Early Ventures handbook. And you will also see the Kid Ventures handbook. Forgive me as I'm scrolling here to find the next. I'm trying to run both the Zoom meeting and this at the same time. So we've got Kid Ventures, and we have also, I believe, that we have the last as well. Am I right, Anita?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, so those are the first reading this evening, and so we just present them to you. We know that we have caught, thanks to some people looking at, we've caught a few errors. So Mary Grace Hansen, who is retired, we should let her know that she's still here because she's listed in one of the handbooks. We'll correct those things, but this is the first reading of these tonight. So if people have questions on them, we have Erin Bailey with us today who can also answer any questions about the handbooks.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments, board members have? Amy?
Hi, Erin. How are you tonight? I wanted to comment on the Early Ventures and Kid Ventures handbooks. In the Kid Ventures School Age Care Handbook, on page six, you have a family responsibility checklist. And I just wanted to say, I really liked that. I think it puts a lot of information all in one place. And I would even say you might want to put it in a box or something to further emphasize it because I think that's very important information. And I like it so much, I was wondering if you could do something like that for the Early Ventures handbook, so they too could have a family responsibility checklist where you list things like, you know, pay your bills each month and dress your child for both indoors and outdoors. Because I think just making it so people can find the most important details quickly is important, and then the rest of the information is good, too. And I want to just say, in general, I thought both of these were very clear and easy to understand. So I like that about them. I did not like, in the Early Ventures Learning Center, the appendices. And I don't know if they're required by law, but it seems like it's already a really big handbook, and then you have all of these appendices put on there. And I'm wondering if they can be posted online and people can be given links if you really need to share that information. They're not all that readable in the format we were given. I don't know if that's just a problem with the copying of it. But I wanted to mention that as well, so if there's anything you can do with those appendices, if you could get rid of them and link to them, that would shorten your handbook by half. So those are my basic comments.
So I can address that for you. First, Amy, thank you for, I can certainly, we can certainly consider having a family checklist in the Early Ventures handbook as well. As far as all those appendices, they are required by the Department of Human Services, which is who licensed Early Ventures. So we have to have them in the handbook because it is required when our licensor shows up on site that they look, that one requirement is that they will look at our handbook, and we are required to have every one of those appendices in there. Our other requirement is that we have to have staff, we have to check off annually that staff have read the handbook, and that the handbook that they read has to include all of these appendices as well. And the forms are forms that are provided by the Department of Human Services. So I wish we could say we could tweak those and make those a little bit better, that they are a required form, and it is in the format that we are required to provide them, so.
So maybe you can...
I'm sure probably, when we do, sorry, but when we do talk with parents, we tend to direct them to online, and we acknowledge that the handbook has those in there as well.
Maybe now I'm going to suggest that you make it a page longer, but maybe you could put a page in there right before the appendices that is like a table of contents of appendices and a little note that says, required by law for you to have, you know, so they can see why they're all there and what's there and not necessarily. I don't know if they have to read them in every single detail initially, at least. It might be important information for some point, but just an idea.
Yes, and I will just say, these little documents will also be added to the Kid Ventures handbook for each school. So some, you know, for example, at Breeville, we are still working to get the final maps and kind of all of those things. So some of these that you see in Early Ventures will also appear in Kid Ventures because, again, we are licensed by the Department of Human Services. So you will see the same requirement show up in those. We just have, with two buildings under construction, we have a little bit of lag to update some of that prior to the start of the school as we just wait to get some of those maps rolled to construction.
Thank you.
Ellen, do you have a question or comment?
No, I don't. No, Amy, thank you.
Okay. Any other board members? Jeff?
Yeah, I was just wondering, as far as notifications on here, too. I noticed, you know, KAR11 and a lot of other places on the radio. You know, what about, I didn't see Kim Radio on there at all.
One of the things that we saw in this, Jeff, is that we're going to clean up. There's, we do have some different notification charts and a couple of the different handbooks. And that's the, it's the years are just rolling it over. And so we'll be looking, taking a look at those and making sure they are all the same. And actually, we just need to really point people to the website to where we list all of the different outlets that we report to.
And I obviously think that, you know, if I can go someplace as a parent and sign up for an email alert or a text alert, that would be ideal.
Yep, and that's what we have available through our Skylark system.
Great.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay. These handbooks will be an item for individual action at our August 24th board meeting. Our next item for discussion is the 2020-2021 Learning Models and Decision-Making Process. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so I'm going to slide this over here and share the screen so that the people on Zoom can also see. So board members received a copy of this along with all families of the school district last Wednesday, and we were grateful for the work that people have put in to prepare the bulk of this document. As I mentioned before, we had three pre-K-12 teams that have been working since the middle of June to prepare planning for the fall. And not knowing what the situation was going to bring, we were told to plan for three different scenarios. In-person learning, a hybrid option, which would include in-person and distance learning, and of course, a distance learning option. So those are the three scenarios that the Department of Education asked us to prepare. We had three pre-K-12 teams that looked at things across all three of those models. They looked at logistics. Mr. Sanus mentioned that before. So they were looking at things like transportation, hallway traffic, how we serve lunch, things like that. We had an instructional, and that team, that logistics team, was led by Joel Olson, our school activities director. And his experience in the military really was very helpful in leading that group in order of operations, thinking through those kinds of things. That kind of strategic thinking has proven invaluable. Hope Langston led our instructional design team that looked at all three of the scenarios and is still working on making sure that we are prepared to implement any one of those three scenarios at some point during the school year. And then our final team was led by Director of Special Services Cheryl Hall, and they looked specifically at health and virus prevention. And so we put together a very extensive document that we, each group put together an extensive document that we collated into the document that we shared with you. And so I just want to walk through some of these pieces and then talk with you about the next steps into turning the base learning model for this coming year. So I want to point out that, again, we talked about the family conferences, which we discussed at the last board meeting, and how important those are going to be as we start the year, and that our first formal day of instruction would then be on Monday, September 14th. We really believe that that first week of family conferences is going to be essential. No great learning happens without great relationship. And as you heard about the closing conferences and the success that they had at the elementary level, as we move into the fall, the three teams strongly felt that establishing this relationship in this abnormal year with families was critical. Not only from the perspective of the normal kinds of things you want to chat about with people at the beginning of a school year, but really detailed about how has the pandemic impacted your family? How has the ongoing concern about race in our countries sparked by the murder of George Floyd impacted people's family? How has the economic downturn impacted people's families? If we know more about our families, we can better serve them. And so that those entry-level, those family conferences are a real key part of how we plan to start the year. You'll notice that we also did, in this first segment, we did get guidance last week from the Minnesota State High School League. They did move two sports to what they're calling a fourth season. So football and volleyball will move from the fall to a March-through-May season, a reduced season. And then the remainder of the fall sports, girls tennis, girls tennis, girls swimming, boys and girls soccer, and cross-country. Those sports will begin next Monday. They have a reduced season, a reduced number of contests. An example, the state high school league has reduced the number of teams that can participate in a cross-country meet. There are some very specific regulations around governing how those things operate. But we were able to, we got that just before we sent this out, so we were able to include that in the document for parents. And then I want to just basically walk you through the guiding principles to begin with, and then I'm just going to highlight just a couple of things in each learning model. So as you know, we think that it's important to have a vision for how we're going to tackle something that is unknown. And we know that this year will once again, just like last spring, challenge us with decisions and situations that we have not dealt with before. It is Monday, and we started dealing with those yesterday. It is Monday and we started dealing with those yesterday, just for this week. So every day, and I'm not, I'm not joking, it is every day, multiple times a day where we're dealing or thinking through a situation that we have not had to think through before. And so guiding principles are critical in making sure that we have a set of principles in which to make decisions upon. Not that they're going to cover every decision. However, we think that they're incredibly important to guide us when we are challenged by things that we have not had to necessarily solve in the past. I'm not going to read them to you because I have presented them to you before. But you know that we believe in relationships, you know that we believe in stewardship. So taking a look at short-term decisions that might feel good in the short term, but they have long-term financial impact. So we are going to be educating students far beyond the end of the demobilization of the pandemic. So making those tough decisions about what are the things that we can do in the short term to get things moving while at the same time recognizing that there is a long-term financial impact. I also want to point out the part about the reasonable consistency. That is something that our teams have been working really hard on over the summer. So we talked about those three big learning, those three big task force teams. We also have many other teams that are being run mostly in our instructional services area. So we have an entire group that is simply looking at core curriculum and prioritizing if we do have a disrupted year, what are the most important skills for each area throughout the entire system to teach? So that we make sure that students get the things that our teachers feel are the most important based on the state standards. Hope Langston is leading that group of, I think it's more than 20 people, really digging in and taking a look at what are the most critical core items that have to be addressed. We also have had people look at our learning management systems. And so one of the big learnings that we had last spring, when we had students off campus, is that while we enjoy giving people autonomy, we learned that it's very difficult for a parent if a teacher posts some assignments in one way in Schoology and two others post them differently. So Hope Langston led a team at both the elementary and the secondary level about how to create some consistent templates for how we post assignments and how we post resources in Schoology, making it predictive, predictable, excuse me. So these are the kinds of things that have come from the guiding principles because we knew that they were important. And I know that at the last meeting, Dr. Hardy shared about to give ourselves grace. And we are having to remind ourselves of that almost daily as well. Because there are things that we have gotten right, there are things that we have gotten wrong. When we get something wrong, we admit it, we fix it, and we move forward and try not to make the same mistake twice. But in order to get through that, giving ourselves grace is a really important part of that equation. So I know I've gone through these before, and of course, monitor and adjust is probably one of the most important that we're working through each day as well. So as we look at the learning model design, I want to start right here. So Governor Walz brought forward the Safe Learning Plan. And we were able to hear from Susan Clammer, who is the Minnesota Department of Health Epidemiologist, who has been assigned to school districts since COVID-19 really became an issue in late February, early March. And Susan Clammer had a chance to describe the Department of Health's approach to the learning scenarios and the scientific data behind them and what was driving them. And so we had a chance to spend probably 45 minutes on a commissioner's call with her as she walked us through each of these scenarios. So what the state is suggesting that school districts do is they are looking at a two-week set of data, it's a rolling 14 days' worth of data, specifically around the number of infections per 10,000 residents in your base county. We are using Rice County. It does say, the guidance says if you have a substantial proportion of your students that are living in an adjacent county, that you should take the most conservative numbers. But as you know, both Dakota County and Good Hugh County have a small percentage of our students. The vast majority of our students live in Rice County. So what you'll see on the board here is that if you are at that per 10,000 county residents infection rate between zero and nine, the guidance from the Department of Health is in-person learning for all students. When we look at 10 to 19, they're talking about in-person learning at the elementary level and a hybrid option where some students are on campus some days and distance learning other days and cohorts that come in and out and switch. That is what the suggestion is for 10 to 19 for secondary students. If we were to get to 20 to 29 infections per 10,000 residents over a 14-day period, we'd be looking at hybrid learning for all students. And again, some students on campus some days of the week, distance learning the rest of the time and cohorts that flip. You'll see if we get between 30 and 49, we're looking at hybrid for elementary students and distance learning for secondary students. If we were to get above 50, we'd be looking at distance learning for all students. So this is the guidance that we are using. It's not the, it's not the be-all, end-all, right? There's some other factors that we are taking into account. However, this is the data that the epidemiologists at the Minnesota Department of Health used when they are developing their guidance for schools. We'll come back to this a little bit later. So the key thing in the in-person learning model is that when we're looking at in-person learning, it's the thing that looks closest to what school would normally look like. But it's not going to look like it. The Executive Order 2081 requires that all students will wear a face covering. If they, if a mask is problematic, under certain medical conditions, a face shield can be offered. And then we also have some ability for some students who have some either disabilities or things like that, to be able to provide them some other kinds of accommodations. But the bottom line is that you will see students at school, students and teachers and all staff wearing masks just like we are all here tonight. That is not, it's not negotiable. It is the law, it is an executive order, and we will follow it. The key thing is going to be that you're not going to be required to have six feet of physical distancing. The way that the guidance talks about is that it is physical distancing as feasible. And of course, that's going to depend on the age of the child, it's going to depend on the building that students are at. But we are committed to making sure that we can create that awareness. I was really happy to hear Mr. Sanus talk about bridges to kindergarten because I think that we all know that this could be tough for students. But at the same time, we know when we can teach students about it and we can explain to them what physical distancing is, we have success in making sure that students are able to follow those kinds of things. And so we will be working very hard to teach students what does the most physical distancing feasible look like in a school. And that's part of the reason we want to do family conferences and pre-teach those skills so that we are able to begin the year effectively if the in-person learning model is what we are using. In a hybrid learning model, again, what we are looking at is some students learning on campus and some students distance learning. You're going to notice that the model that we have selected is very similar to what many other districts are choosing. Everybody's looks slightly different. But most districts are doing two different cohorts that come in for a couple of days a week. And then typically, there's also one additional day, districts do it a little bit differently. But many school districts are using one of the days of the week where everybody does distance learning. And it's also used as a deeper disinfection day. In Northfield, we have the Maroon cohort that would start and be Monday, Tuesday. Wednesday would be distance learning for everyone, deeper disinfection. And then Thursday, Friday, the Gold cohort would be on campus. And obviously, on Monday and Tuesday, when the Maroon cohort are on campus, the Gold cohort is doing distance learning and vice versa. So this is the approach that we have looked at with our hybrid model. And I want to give just really a lot of thanks to Director of Technology Services, Kim Bersky, has been working since last week to create our cohorts. So making sure that when we create cohorts, that even if we start in different learning models at the elementary versus the secondary, that if we were in a hybrid option the entire time for all students, that we can prioritize having families coming to school on the same days to try to make sure that we are able to give them some similar schedules and that we're able to align that with the transportation.
I just have a quick question about the hybrid model. Are the teachers also on a hybrid model or are they coming all four days? You know, it's a chemistry teacher in the high school all four days, but just teaching the different cohorts? And how does that work for when the kids are off and a distance?
So the concept is, is that the teachers will be onsite all four days. They will be teaching their in-person students who are here. And they will be providing on-your-own kinds of assignments on those distance learning days. Doesn't mean that they wouldn't have access to their teacher. Students would have access to the teacher if they are off campus. The best example I can give to you that some of our content areas may choose to use would be think of the flipped classroom. So we've given you presentations about that before where a teacher may record materials for students to have on the days that they are not here and some kind of assignment to go along with that. And then when students are on campus, they're doing only the things that they could do on campus. And again, in this case, in the hybrid model, we are required to provide six feet of physical distancing. And we're to have no more than 50% of the fire marshalls building occupancy. So in that case, what you'd be looking at is you'd be looking at something, let's just take science, for example. Science classes may have a lecture that they're watching and interacting with a couple of days a week, and then when they're on campus, they will probably be doing some laboratory kinds of assignments. So what are the things that we have to do in person? And what are the things that we can leverage the technology for to do when they aren't here? So that is the concept behind the hybrid approach. And we do have, we're going to talk about the portage option, which is a completely separate all-the-time online option, which will be separate and different. We know that some school districts are having those people who choose distance learning all the time also be part of a regular class, so the teacher's not only teaching the in-person and the hybrid approach, the combination between the two, but they also would have some distance learning students who are never going to come on campus as part of their courses. We heard loudly and clearly from our staff that they did not feel that that was feasible to include students who are distance learning only as part of the in-person or the hybrid cohorts. So you will see that that's slightly different, Amy, when we get to that part. But that is the concept behind our version of the hybrid. And frankly, we're very similar to a lot of other districts in this regard. So the key thing that I want to share with is that as well, when we get to things like lunch, if I'm part of the Maroon cohort, I am able to get meals that our food service department will have prepared to take home with me for the rest of the week. And the same thing on Friday. I'm also, if I'm part of the Gold cohort, I'll also be able to get some meals to take with me. And as when we get to the portage option, the all-the-time online, those students are also eligible for meals. Transportation, you'll notice that in the in-person model, there was actually no requirement to have any kind of reduced capacity. In the in-person model, we are choosing to take the capacity to approximately two-thirds. In the hybrid model, it's a no more than 50% capacity. And if you were to get in a situation where you have one grade level band elementary in-person and another grade level band secondary and hybrid, we have to go with the more conservative of the two. So if we were in that situation, we'd be doing no more than 50% capacity on the school bus. So just people understand that that's what the state has advised us to be able to do. You'll notice that we have childcare as part of both the hybrid and the distance learning option. When we get to the distance learning model, we're affectionately calling this Distance Learning 2020-21. So distance learning, again, in this, what we're calling the, it's in one learning track. It's a learning track that involves students having to shift potentially between these three models. Distance learning would be similar to what it was last spring, but improved in a number of different ways. In fact, we have a group working right now to talk about how many synchronous instructional minutes should we have if we have to move to distance learning? So that's just an example of how we are bringing staff to the table to be able to help us decide what are the rules for the game if we have to shift to the distance learning in this, this learning track that would involve potentially in-person, hybrid, or a distance learning approach. The portage model I want to share with you. So portage, we were looking at, could we come up with a name that we would be able to distinguish all-the-time online from distance learning during the, with the other two models? And so portage will be the all-the-time online. And so if families commit to portage, we know that some people just are not coming, feeling comfortable coming back in at all in person. And we're asked, we're giving them this option to be able to go all-the-time online. At the elementary school level, the all-the-time online will look similar to what our distance learning looked last spring. It'll be taught by a Northfield Public Schools teacher, who is someone that people know and love. Will most likely have one section at each grade level. It's possible we could have some multi-grade sections if we have smaller enrollment. But that will be a mix of synchronous Zoom kind of instruction for students with of course, some on-your-own activities. They'll use the same Northfield Public Schools curriculum. They will use the reading, the mathematics, the social-emotional learning. So it will look very similar, they will develop classroom culture. Even though it will be online, it will look similar to what it was last spring. And again, leveraging what we learn. And again, people choosing this as opposed to having to move into it into an emergency option. At the secondary level, because of the variety of courses that we offer, we are using a product called Odysseyware that you are familiar with. Our ALC and our high school have used Odysseyware very successfully over the years. There's a tremendous amount of coursework that's available. And we're going to be having high school licensed Northfield Public Schools teachers as what we're calling learning coaches. And so these staff members will have a cohort of students that they'll be responsible for. They'll be looking at the Odysseyware software dashboard, making sure that students are progressing. They'll be checking in with students regularly during the week via Zoom. They'll be providing some social-emotional learning options. People in the portage model are eligible to participate in Northfield Public Schools activities because they are a Northfield High School student or Northfield Middle School student. They can participate in those activities. And so they are also eligible for meals. This is a Northfield Public Schools program, they are Northfield Public Schools classes. The difference is you're just doing this all online. We are asking people to commit to one semester, you could do the entire year. We will allow people to shift into the portage option at any time that they would like because that is what the state has asked us to do. But of course, we can't just for efficiency sake have people bopping in and out of those two options. So there are really two learning tracks. There is a learning track that involves the potential to shift between hybrid or in-person, hybrid and distance learning 2021, and the portage option, which is the all-the-time online. We, in this document, we also explain very clearly a number of different services that people would be offered. Yell support. We talk diligently about our instructional practices. We talk quite a bit about virus prevention in our buildings. And I want to point out that we talk about virus mitigation at school. We talk, we link to documents like the Executive Order governing face coverings. You'll also notice that we can, we link to a 26-page COVID-19 disinfection plan that we have worked, put together with our partners from Hilliard. You'll also notice that we'll have physical distance markings, they have come in, you'll see them, they're yellow discs that will be on the floor. We're going to have a number of posters throughout the buildings if students are on campus to be able to remind them of staying apart. You'll talk, you'll see that we have an item on daily health screenings. This is one of the things that we're going to have to update in just the next couple of days. There's a couple of things that we have to, basically, it's, there was some concern about if any one of these symptoms, and there's some updated guidance, it's really if there are, there are some that if you have these symptoms, you need to stay home. Others, it's a combination of one or two. And so I had gotten, we've gotten some feedback from some folks. And we're just going to update that part to make sure it's matching completely up with what the latest guidance is. And that's going to be something we're going to be dealing with through the whole school year. Is that what we think we know today is not going to be what we know tomorrow or the next day. And we are going to have to change. So we're going to update these documents as we see that, as they are, need to be updated. And we will be communicating with people when they need to be updated. You'll also notice that we have a very detailed part about how we handle any kind of cases within the system. And you'll see that we also have the student and staff protocol flow charts. There was an update last Thursday that we have to make some changes to our flow charts because of, we'll be doing that this week. And you'll notice that Cheryl Hall will be our COVID-19 coordinator. She'll be the official contact for these kinds of, any kind of case or anything that we're working through. We talk about contact tracing, the isolation process. So as you can see, there has been a tremendous amount of thought going into how we can make sure that we can keep our schools as safe as practicable if we are to return in either an in-person or a hybrid model. The final piece is we do have an area for people to get help and ask them how to, where they can get help and direct links to people to be able to connect with them on a variety of items. So I want, I know that you had already received this, this is my typical operations report. We are proud of the work that these teams have done. I want to share one interesting fact. We took a, we used an interesting approach where we had those 60 people that I mentioned who were on the planning teams. And then we used a strategy that we called the red team. And what the red team is, it's a, it's a term from investigative journalism where a journalist, journalist crew is looking at a story. And before they're moved forward with it, they look at, they have somebody who's not been connected to the investigation come in from the outside to review the evidence and to believe that they have- and to believe that they have it done well enough where they can move forward. So we had people who were not part of the planning process come in after the planning process was nearly complete to give a fresh set of eyes and to give feedback. And my team leads tell me that was one of the best things that we did because it really helped clarify the thinking. It really helped make sure that we had all of our, as many of our ducks in a row as we possibly could. And even with all that work, we still have some things, obviously, to change as we move forward. So planning for the unplannable is how we have talked about this. We are very proud of the work that we've done. We know we have a ton more work to do. And it's one thing to have a very nice document, it's another thing to implement it. So we have shifted to begin in August from the planning portion to the implementation portion. You heard a little bit about that with our elementary principals, talking about the practicality of how students would take some of our specialist courses. Those are the kinds of things that are happening between now and the first day that students will be on campus. This is a moving target. We will continue to have plans and revise those plans and revise those plans again based upon a number of circumstances. When it comes to making the decision for the base learning model, this evening, we have a resolution that MSBA has suggested that we take. We would like to make our decision and announce that next Monday, August 17th. That's what I have communicated with families. We have a group that we're bringing together that's called the incident command team. It involves our team leads from the summer. Julie Pritchard, Board Chair will be part of the incident command team. We have a student, we have a teacher. We're inviting a member of the community with some medical background to be part of that team, and public health. And we're looking at the data that will be going through, actually the data for us to be able to make a decision on August 17th, will actually go through August 12th. What we've learned is, public health needs several days to make sure that the cases have been cleaned up and put in the right place so that we don't inadvertently have a case in Rice County numbers that potentially could have been a good Hughes County number. So what we plan to do is to use the grid that I shared with you at the beginning. I'll slide back up to that so that you can see that again, as our guide. And so using the Rice County infection rate per 10,000 and looking at what the grid says and using that as the basis, you know, for our work. The latest number that I heard, that we've heard on Friday from Rice County Public Health is that we, because we're getting nearly daily reports, just over 11 cases per 10,000, which puts us at the real bottom part of this band for in-person learning for elementary students and hybrid learning for secondary students. We have a number of spreadsheets that we're running and putting the daily numbers. And of course, what we have isn't going to always manage what Rice County has because they have the more accurate data about where their cases that were shuffled to a different county and that kind of thing. So the key thing I want to share is we're talking with folks regularly. We're working with the Department of Health. We're working with Rice County Public Health to consult. And then we'll make our decision for the base learning model and announce that next Monday. And the resolution that we'll take tonight will indicate how we will go about doing that. So we really want to use the work that our scientists have done in terms of telling us what's the best way to be able to come back to school. We've, we've learned, these people are incredible. We have one of the best public health departments, systems in the country in Minnesota. And we're so thrilled with what Rice County Public Health has done with us over the last several months. We have a weekly phone call with them. They're just excellent. And we're really getting great advice and great consultation with them. So that is the presentation for this evening about the plans that we've shared with you. You've, you had the information in your packet. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I might be able to answer at this time.
Excellent, thank you. Questions? Amy, I saw your head first.
I think we all have questions.
Yes.
I have several questions. First though, I wanted to thank you, Dr. Hillman, and all your teams and all of the staff and teachers who've been involved in all of this work over the summer and trying to figure all of this out and come up with a plan for our community. I know it's been a lot of work and a lot of challenges. So thanks to all of you for that. I also wanted to say, I think this is a lovely document that you've created to share with families. And I also wanted to thank you not only for this document, but all of the communications you've been doing with all your different constituencies in the community since the start of this whole thing back in March. So thank you for that. Because I think communication is so important in the relationships that we're trying to build. So now to my questions. So with the transportation questions and issues and how many kids can be on the bus at one time? Does, will that have any effect on the school's starting times?
So we anticipate that there will be some modest impact on the school start times. So we don't know that yet because we have to figure out who's taking transportation. And we've had a number of these situations that I would call our chicken or egg. And so we needed to know the bus numbers so we could start planning. But we're getting the bus numbers before people know what the learning model is. And every school in the state is really struggling with this. So the deadline for transportation request was on Friday. Benjamin Bus is working through that. We're also having students who are signing up for the all the time online program right now. So we just don't know what the ridership is going to be quite yet. We have access to some additional buses. About, the key thing is we're, we're thinking that the pickup times to start are going to be fairly similar. The approach that we're going to use is that this is the closest to cost neutral. All the buses will go out into the rural area. They will pick up all K-12 students. They will bring them back into town. They will drop them off at their schools. And I'm summarizing this in the interest of time. They have to disinfect the bus between that rural route and the in-town route. And so they'll do a disinfection of the bus. They don't have to go back out to the bus garage, do that. They have the ability to do that onsite. They will then go out and do an in-town K-12 route and drop off at the schools. So we, we are not knowing quite yet what the exact difference in time will be. But we do know that there will be some buildings where the starting time is later than what it normally is. A big part of this are the cohorts that I mentioned that we're finishing developing and the routing that takes place. So I'm not able to tell you exactly. It's not going to be like it's nine o'clock. I mean, it's going to be something probably a little bit after 8:15 or 8:20 where we might see the secondary school start. But again, that is still in flux because if the ridership is lower, that may be a factor. So we, we aren't able to give a specific piece yet because, as you know, we're very, we are very tight and efficient on our bus system. We want to make sure that we can provide the best transportation for people in the most efficient system possible. And we've taken that same, those same guiding principles and applied them in this particular case. We know there are some families just, I'm just going to drive my student this year. That's great. But we didn't have that data completely until Friday. And frankly, we expect that data to change between now and the beginning of the school year. We can't set the times, as you know, when we looked at later school start times, we can't set the start times without understanding what the transportation routes will look like.
And so it could affect the end time as well?
It could affect the end time as well.
Okay. Then I had a few questions about the portage option.
Yes.
I'm very interested in learning about Odysseyware and how, like the depth and breadth of the offerings for the students. So if a high school or middle school student wants to go with portage, can they, you know, have the same variety of classes as they have now? Will they get the same credit? What if they decide they want to take 10 classes and get 10 credits? Can they speed up their education? Just if you could talk a little bit about how Odysseyware translates into the transcript that the student has?
So I'm going to have Director of Instructional Services, Hope Langston, answer this question. Hope, can you take this one away?
Yes, I can. So we are meeting on Wednesday to work with the department heads at the high school to make sure we are all on the same page with course alignment. And you are right, Amy, that, that kids could self-paced through Odysseyware and end up taking more courses than they typically would in an in-person setting. There is flexibility in that. But, you know, they're going to work with their guidance counselors to pick courses that most align to their current schedule. And I think this is one of those areas where Dr. Hillman has said that we are going to be watching closely to see what kind of adjustments we need to make in course, course acquisition.
And I'll also show here on the screen. So this is the, why not? This is the Odysseyware course list for Minnesota. And I'm sharing the screen so people at home can see it as well. And I'm going to just go ahead and click six. So what you're going to see here is you are going to see. Maybe you'll see it. Bruce, I'm just going to bring it onto the screen and then if you can zoom in on it here. How about that? All right. So you'll see the courses in Minnesota here. And what you're going to see is that we have lots of different options in the core areas as well. And then you're also going to see that there are quite a few electives. When we get into the electives area, you'll see there's all sorts of electives as well, some of which we have, some of which we don't. You're also going to notice that we have access to some test prep. And then there's a whole bevy of career technical options that are available, many of which we don't have here on campus. So the depth and the breadth, there's quite a bit. And then we also have access to, Hope, is it 12 courses? AP courses through Edgenuity? Could you talk about Edgenuity just a little bit?
Yes, so Edgenuity is a parent company to Odysseyware. And they also offer quite an extensive selection of coursework. And we have purchased the AP package, which gives our students access to 13 AP courses. Some, many of which we offer at the high school, but some of which we don't.
So it sounds like this could be a real opportunity for some students who might have interest beyond what the high school currently offers. So that's exciting, actually. I, that's.
I've lamented a little bit that Jeff had mentioned, or some folks, and Tom had mentioned before about being able to leverage this situation to do things differently. And because we have to shift seamlessly between, in the learning track that involves hybrid, in-person and distance learning, because we have to shift seamlessly, that has limited some of the innovation that we could do right now because to be able to shift in and out of those three scenarios, we have to make sure that the courses are able to not look totally different. But I do think that the portage option is something that we will explore doing more work as we move forward, looking at, working with the state on a number of different things. We think that long-term, right now, this is being done because we're all required to offer all the, all online, all the time option for students. But this is something that we see potentially continuing with moving forward. Of course, there'll be some different things we work with within it. We know there were a number of students last spring who really thrived in distance learning, who had struggled in the face-to-face portion of the school. And we think that there's some opportunities there to offer this kind of option moving forward, where students could continue to participate in Northfield activities and things like that. Again, so our long-term vision is it's possible for us to be able to continue this even after the pandemic. There's some other things we'll have to do to make that happen. But we see this as one of the innovations that could outlast the pandemic.
Yeah, I didn't realize it would be this exciting. And I just want to encourage any families out there to realize that the portage is not just, you know, distance learning 1.0, but it's really much bigger than that. And I know every family has their own individual needs and has to make their own individual decisions. But to take a close look at portage and see if it'll work for your kids if you have all concern about the safety of sending them back to school. And I think it's really, sounds like a good option.
Hope Langston and I have run two webinars for families, two evenings of webinars already for families. And last Thursday, Hope, I think between the two, we had close to 200 people, right?
Yes, we did.
And then another four, another probably 80 on Saturday morning. And we have one more set of webinars tomorrow night. So we know that there's some interest and we're asking people to register this week. We're asking them to register by the 17th. Again, that is not because it's a drop dead date, but we need to be able to plan and staff this. One of the biggest challenges that we are going to face is staffing. And so whether it be assigning people to the portage option who have requested remote work, if we need to look at other people who have been specifically really sophisticated in their work and teaching remotely and working through these kinds of things with their students. But having these multiple program tracks is not something we are typically built for, right? So we are working to make sure that the staffing works, that we can accommodate people who need to work from home, making sure that we are putting people in these programs who have demonstrated skill in teaching online and be able to be successful in that. This is just one of the many very interesting journeys that we have been on. But we are very excited about the portage option. We do think it has a lot of potential, not just now, but into the future.
All right, my last comment, and that is, I think that considering right now, you're just asking people to sign up for a semester, which is great. This is really an opportunity for their kids to explore some new areas possibly that they wouldn't get otherwise. So take a look at the portage option, everybody, and see if it works for your family. Thank you.
Your best.
Other questions, comments? Jeff?
Yeah, you know, one of the most significant things that you said a while back, which if people ask, what's, you know, what's the school year coming up going to look like? And I, you know, like you said before, you know, October's probably not going to look a lot like September. And September's not going to look a lot like, you know, October. So I mean, moving forward, this is new. I mean, you know, we're not used to pandemics. We're not, we're used to tornadoes and things in Minnesota. We're used to snow days. We're used to, you know, a lot of different things. So, you know, whatever we start with, we just, like you said, we need some grace and mercy and have to work with that. And whatever the comfort level is of the parent, whether they want to show up in person or do distance learning. And I just think that, you know, we'll evolve into, you know, whatever situation that, that works best and keeping, you know, safety in mind. As far as numbers go, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, I think that Rice County is about 60 to 65,000 people.
A little more than 65,000 is the number they're using.
Okay, okay. And then the school district's about 25,000 people. But I, you know, I'm just wondering, I think if you're looking at your data and your numbers, I mean, and I know that this is a starting point, that, you know, you could pull those addresses out of that 25,000 and be more specific for cases and that. So without getting too deep into the woods, can you give a general protocol of what that would look like and where you're getting the numbers from? And like it's a snow day, I mean, the, the parent, you know, just wondering, hey, you know, what's going on today? And how do I know which one of these formats we're going to be in?
So the, the base learning format to start will be a, a big starting point. And we've really been advised to use the county level data for a variety of reasons. First of all, that's how Minnesota tracks these things through their public health departments, which reside at the county level. In addition, in our county, of course, we know, we know we have about 250 of our students who have a Faribault address, right? So we, we really are a county-wide kind of system. But that's the base learning model. As we move ahead, what our understanding is, is that we'll be working with something called the Regional Centers for Support. They are aligned with the state's regional service cooperative. So ours is out of Rochester. It will involve members of the staff from the Southeast Service Cooperative. It will involve a specialized contact with the Minnesota Department of Health. It will involve a contact from the Minnesota Department of Education. It will also include contact tracers from MDH. And it will also include, I believe it will include contact tracers. And it will also include Rice County Public Health. And if there is, as we are looking at this regularly, as we're looking at the data, if there is a shift to where we would need to shift the learning model based upon the public health conditions, an increase or a decrease in those numbers, the regional support team is going to come in and really do a deep dive for us. So in the case that you suggested, Jeff, if there was an increase in the Rice County numbers that would change our learning model, or let's even say it's a decrease in the numbers, let's stick with the increase for right now. They would do a deep dive into where did those additional cases come from? And as they look at that with the entire Department of Health contact tracing system and looking at where those cases are at, if they're comfortable that it's a specific outbreak to one area, maybe it's a business, maybe it's another organization, and they feel that, yes, there was an increase of the cases, but they are limited to that one area, and they're, the key thing and they're, the key thing will be not seeing communities spread beyond that, they may tell us to keep going in the existing models that we have. If we do need to necessitate a shift, the state says that we can use up to five student contact days to make the change between one learning model and another. So basically, they're giving you the ability to take five student contact days, turn them into planning days, to be able to shift from one model to the other. So you can be out of school for those five days, up to five days. Not saying we need to use all of them, it's going to depend upon the time of the year, it's going to depend on the shift that we're using. And so we would like, of course, to try to give families as much predictability as we possibly can. But even though, I've said this a number of times, even though we've become accustomed to having COVID-19 in our midst, this is still a global health emergency. And we are not in charge of the virus. We can do a lot of things to mitigate it. We can wear face coverings, we can wash our hands, we can stay home when we're feeling ill. We can make sure that we provide physical distancing, like we've done here at the board meeting this evening. There's a number of things we can do to try to mitigate that. But we are not in charge of this, you know, the, the virus is going to do what the virus is going to do. And we are going to try to make sure that we can be as proactive as possible, and then may have to shift, again, based upon what the evidence suggests. So that is just a description, Jeff, of how far, and I won't go any further into the weeds than that. I hope that's far enough for you.
Yeah, that's my final question. What protocol or process are we suggesting to our students' employees to say, you know, gee, as far as testing, and what testing method are we going to use, you know, et cetera?
So we are not a testing institution. You know, we, we are not able to do that. I've, I've had several conversations with other medical facilities about that possibility. One of the things that the governor did do is the governor is providing us one saliva-based test for every employee in the district. And so each employee will have their own saliva-based test. When we get them, if the person wants it, they can take it, they put some saliva in a tube, they send it off to a laboratory, they get those results in a couple of days. If we get to the point where there was some kind of infection outbreak within the system itself, that's where the regional support centers would come in. They would come in and help determine, do we need to do some kind of specific testing within the system? All the way to, they would actually conduct a testing event for us. So I think that there's a good system for that, and we hope that that's something that we don't need. But that would be what the regional support centers would do for us as well.
So you'd really be identifying hotspots and then they would kind of.
Correct, and determine what level of testing would be needed.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, you had a question?
Yeah. Echoing Amy's comments, thanking everybody for all the effort they put into this. Hopefully, they got a little time off this summer to rejuvenate, because they're going to need it. And it's sort of like the Kevin Costner figure in the movie Hidden Figures, where, you know, they take some of these work that they spent the whole day doing and just toss them in the garbage can and say, that's how fast things move around here. So hopefully, this one just ended up in the garbage can. I had a couple of transportation questions. So rural students get picked up first, they get dropped off from the school, and then they do what while the city kids get picked up? Then, at the end of the school day, the city kids get dropped off first, and then, again, the rural kids do what? And then the rural kids get dropped off, and they're, being in the rural area, their routes take longer. So they're going to have a long day. And so maybe like having homework help or something like that going on, they could do their homework. And then also sort of related to that, as far as like sports, in the away game, would you put everybody, all the team on a bus, or could they have the option of going with their family? Or if they're old enough to drive themselves?
Yeah, so a couple of things, Tom. One is that there will be supervision, of course, in that timeframe, where from students get on campus to the time that school starts. Some of that in the morning could include breakfast, right? It could include outdoor activities. We're still working through what that would look like in the morning. The afternoon, something similar. The afternoon will be a much shorter timeframe. And we've had some people ask, well, isn't, wouldn't it be fair to have the rural students go home first in the afternoon? And then, you know, come back and take the city students? And that's simply a math problem of, it takes not very long at all for the buses to do their in-town routes. And so we just, we would have to supervise students less at that time by taking the city students and then taking the rural students home. So, you know, part of this is trying to make sure that we're maximizing some of the efficiency of the routes, not traveling, you know, quite as far each time. We will have supervised activities for students that are appropriate before school and after school. Those are things that we are still working on at this time. And then you had the other part about, remind me one more time.
About sports teams, if they're going to go in the bathroom?
So we are just still, we, we just got that guidance last week. They have reduced quite a bit of the, of the, they've reduced the activities or the contests by a substantial amount. Typically, our policy, Tom, would say that you can't drive yourself to your own away event. So that is not something I've heard that we're considering at this point. But we're also would have reduced number of students participating in some of those bars. So there are going to be more, so there's less teams coming. And so we're still getting through some of that state high school league guidance. Many activities directors are talking about it, preparing for the start of that season the next week.
Thank you.
Helen, do you have a question or comment?
I have one question. When you're thinking about the monitor, the adjusting and monitoring, and I, I want to thank you for the document. And I think Newger Communications does such a wonderful job of helping with the communications, too. How is that going to look for a parent? I think Jeff got a little bit of this, and he asked the questions, sort of, you know, what's going on today? But I know that we can't even imagine some of the scenarios that you and your leadership team are going to be hitting. So how, as a parent, would I be constantly reading this document, but probably know what's new? How would they know what's changed?
So I, the way that we will look at changing the documents, we do want to keep a, a single document that people are able to look to. So one of the things that we would be looking at, we've learned from the state that when they release something new and they update it, they will, number one, put a date on it, you know, to make sure you know what the date is and what the latest one is. And will also include a, as part of our email to families, we would include which sections would have changed. And then the typical practice is to highlight the new sections. We are also developing frequently asked questions documents. We've started those already for the portage option, because those were the, were the biggest questions we're coming from to begin with. And so we'll do a combination, Ellen, of, here's what has changed, since this is the new and improved version. The items that were changed are highlighted, we'll give you an introduction about what were the changes. And then the other part that we're using, we're publishing the document through Google Drive. And in Google Drive, you have the ability to do something called manage versions. I learned this the hard way last spring. And when you manage versions of a PDF, you can keep the exact same link, but you can update which PDF. So people would never have to have a new link. They keep the same link, and it would take them to whatever the new and updated document is. So it's going to be more convenient for families that way. But those are just a few of the strategies, Ellen, that we would do to make sure people are up to date.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I had a couple of questions. So in looking at the governor's, he's calling it his safe learning plan for 2020, 2021. What I understand for childcare is we will, we will, we must provide childcare for critical care workers for the hybrid learning model and the distance learning model. And that we would have the opportunity to collect additional fees for before or after school and provide free of charge the duration of the school day.
That is correct.
Okay. My other question.
Erin, that all sounded correct to me, did that sound correct to you?
Correct. So we, it would be our intention right now, Julie, that we would run KidVentures as normal. If, if we were in a hybrid or distance learning model, we would run KidVentures as normal. So we would run before and after school care, and that would be fee-based. And we would run a childcare program during the normal school hours for tier-one employees that would, without charge.
Okay, so then you're saying before or after school could be general population students, not just critical care worker students?
Correct, yeah. So if we were to start at an elementary in-person model, we would be offering KidVentures to.
Oh, sure.
Those who want to enroll.
Right, just in the in-person, not in a hybrid or distance.
Correct. I mean, there would be potentially, I mean, if we were in hybrid, we may, we'd still be able to accommodate. I mean, it will, again, just depend on a space allotment in buildings, and so we're exploring some options of how we would look, because we just would, you know, we're reaching some capacity limits and who's in what classrooms and how we can disinfect those classrooms in between. But we would hope to provide childcare to children who needed it before and after school care in the hybrid model, while also running it the daytime model for those that are children of critical care workers.
Okay, great, thank you. So you've, you've highlighted Dr. Hillman, the, the regional team, which is going to be extremely important for us, an important resource. About how many districts will be a part of a regional team?
So it's based upon the regional service cooperative. So I, I believe, I'm not going to, it's, it's a few dozen schools that are part of the, and it ranges from Rochester Public Schools all the way down to very small school districts in the region.
Okay, and so that team, are there, are they primarily, primarily tasked with contact tracing? Or what is the responsibility of the district for contact tracing?
So they will assist, we will be, we will be assisting in any kind of contact. We have some contact tracing responsibility within the school, but they will also be advising us in those cases.
Okay. So then the, the one thing, you talked about the regional team in terms of them examining outbreaks, et cetera. The one thing the governor focused on, a scenario where their contact tracing would be towards a specific classroom, and that just that classroom may move to distance learning, but with their full evaluation, allow the entire, the rest of the building to stay open?
That is a very possible scenario.
Okay. And then the last thing would be the timing that the governor has asked or required us to give parents leading up to the initial model, which we have determined is August 17th. But we know there's data points between then and September 14th. So what would be the next set of data points that would potentially shift that August 17th decision and still work within the governor's guideline?
So theoretically, there could be, well, they are updating the data, official updating of the data every Thursday. So anybody at home can go to the Minnesota Department of Health website, they can look at, there's a data point, it's a dashboard for schools. And every Thursday, they're going to publish the PDF that has the latest case rate per 10,000. But as you might imagine, each county is also doing that on their own. And so we are getting more frequent updates from Rice County Public Health, because obviously, when we make our decision for, that we're going to be trying to announce, that we're going to announce on the 17th, there could be some additional data points after that. And that is one of the struggles. I know we've had some, we've had some folks who wish we would have been able to announce the learning model sooner. And you'll see some very large districts that did announce their learning models right away. We felt that we, and we respect that, every district's a little bit different. Every district has different nuances as to what allows them to make some of those decisions sooner. But I think most superintendents in the state, one of our bigger fears, is making sure that we have the latest data so that we are able to make a decision that doesn't necessarily have to be changed between the time that we announce it and the time that the school year starts. But that's a possibility. So even though we announced our base learning model on the 17th, the fact is, we have to be, understand that it could change between that time and the beginning of the school year. So for us, we would need, we're required to notify families two weeks ahead of time. So theoretically, we could announce and share with parents something different on the 31st of August. However, that is not our goal. Our goal would be that we were to share with people on the 17th, and that is the learning model we start with. And so unless there was some kind of dramatic change in the data, but we do have to be straightforward, that there is the possibility that it could change. And that's, unfortunately, it's the way we're going to live our lives under this thing for the whole year. You know, until, until we have some, some stronger mitigation tactics, that uncertainty, unfortunately, is something that we are all going to be tasked to live with. And we'll embrace it, you know, we'll, we'll do the best that we can to adjust. And we will promise to communicate as well as we possibly can. But for us to be able to say that, yep, this is what it's going to be for X number of weeks, that just isn't possible. We will do everything that we can on our part as, to keep the buildings as safe as practicable so that we can continue in the learning model that we are, or maybe even shift to hopefully a less restrictive one down the line. But we are going to monitor the data, we're going to use the data, we'll use the systems that the state has provided us to make those shifts. But long answer to your short question, Julie, we'd be required to tell them two weeks before the first day of school.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. So any other last-minute questions or comments? I'd be sure I didn't miss anyone. And I'm glad board members have taken the opportunity, and I want to as well, to thank the, you, you know, for your work and for your incredible teams, and everyone who have really done an amazing job. And I, I had heard nothing but great comments from parents about the document that was sent out last Wednesday. They really respected the amount of work that went into it. And, and again, the format is so easily read and referenced. And so I think just out of the gate, it just looks really, really strong. But we thank you for the work that got us to this place and going forward.
We have some, we have a great team all the way through. We have leadership that has done remarkable work. We have teachers and other folks from different positions within the district that have come to try to create the best plan that we can with the information that we have at the time. Newger Communications, our strategic communications partner, again, second to none, they just do such a great job. So we're grateful for everyone, and we, we need to continue to ask for people's grace and forgiveness as we move into these historic times. I'm tired of saying it, but it really is historic, so.
Okay, great. Okay, so financial update, this might be a time to put up the newest member of the Murdestore family.
Yes, we're happy to have Val back.
Just a little break in the action. We saw it out of the corner, we saw him out.
There we go, there are smiles.
Oh my gosh. Welcome back, Val.
So we were, I'm, there are fewer people that are happier to have Val back than me. So welcome back, Val, we're very happy.
Thank you.
And so as you know, our financial update, we have just really been trying to make sure that we keep you up to date. One of the announcements that we heard from the governor is that there's some additional coronavirus relief funding coming our way. We have not seen that data yet. It does sound like that, that funding will be a little different than the CARES Act funding that I've talked with you about this summer. The coronavirus relief funding that is coming our way will need to be expended by December 31st. This is in alignment with some of the other governmental agencies that have some funding. We also have been working with the county and the city. Both the county and city as agencies are able to redirect some of their funds to other governmental agencies. So city administrator Ben Martig and I had a conversation a few weeks back about some ways that the city could help us in terms of some of the unreimbursed PPE kinds of costs, some of the cleaning materials that we've purchased. So there are, we are looking to potentially get some reimbursement for some of the things that we've already purchased to be able to try to approach COVID. So things like the masks and the shields, you know, things like the hand sanitizer and the soap, those are the things that we're working to potentially get some additional reimbursement through other CARES Act recipients. And so we want to thank, the city, the county is really looking at broadband access. And so we really thank them for taking a look at that. So our, the financial update this evening is really talking about what we're looking at in that next round of coronavirus relief. You also saw, we have to just, you saw the projections for the state budget deficit, over $4 billion. And the next, I've even seen some estimates higher than that. What we know is that it's going to be very difficult for the legislature to provide any base increase to the per-pupil formula. And so we know that there's both the short-term challenges that we're facing right now because of the planning for the school year and all of the different things we've shared with you here tonight. And yet, all Minnesota schools have a long road ahead of them in terms of the financial decisions that we will all be making. And so as we are trying to keep stewardship in mind, there are things that we're having this to decide to do that we have to do in order to be able to hold school this fall. And yet, we're still trying to have an eye toward the future. So we have really just been trying to keep you verbally updated about those kinds of things. So the good news is it does look like there's some additional relief funding coming to us. We don't know exactly how much that's going to be yet, and we'll be keeping our watch for that as, as that comes in from the state. Val, did you have anything you wanted to share tonight?
Nope. Just getting my feet back wet, so. No, I think that was a good, good summary. We're working to kind of close up last fiscal year as quickly as possible, just to see kind of where everything shook out. We did schedule the audit for the third week in October, I believe. So working through those pieces and then hoping to kind of roll that forward and see what the, the enrollment projections come in at. projections come in at, once we get students enrolled and going.
So if questions or comments board members have?
Yeah, I'm just curious about if there's any concern or projections about the possible impact on the self-funded insurance program.
Great question. Val, do you wanna take that one?
I can, yes. Yes, we're always concerned about, but particularly with the healthcare costs and just knowing what's happening with that particular sector, concerns about increasing rates in the future. Our self-insurance has been, we've seen just really significant claims over the last two years, I would say. So our benefit advisory committee was already likely looking at increasing rates just to keep up with our own employee usage. And so adding that other component on top is definitely concerning, and we'll be monitoring that. But again, that's a lot of, lot of things outside of our control that are good to be aware of, but really, all we can do is really kind of double down on the self-care and making sure that they're utilizing the benefits that they do have in the healthcare plan and taking care of themselves. I know Andrea Nelson-Mocker in our HR department has shared a lot of information with staff just about various things and programs that they have access to, especially right now with mental health and things for staff to keep them feeling well. So we're doing as much as we can internally to help staff, because the, what happens with the healthcare market is something that's definitely outside our control.
And I think--
Does that answer your question?
And I wanna add, Val, just as you know, we worked really hard to build a significant fund balance in that area for, exactly for times like this. And so it's important to note that it's been years since we've raised our rates at all. So we've had a really great wave, we had a very good fund balance that really is gonna help us carry through this, and we're very fortunate that we have that at this time. So we've had great financial management of that by Molly Wieselman and by Val. So we are about in as good of a position from a self-funded perspective to be able to handle that kind of situation. That's, I was trying to ask, do you remember, Val, how much we have in that fund balance this year?
Well, I haven't closed out the fiscal year yet, but I would say we're probably around between $4 or $5 million at this length, would be my guess.
I'm just, I'm glad to hear that there's an effort to make people aware of just maintaining their health through all this, I mean, not just COVID-related, but, you know, you hear about people delaying or deferring care for other illnesses, which is just going to defer the costs and make them worse down the line if they put something off. So I think, you know, it's important that people just maintain their healthcare in general throughout this.
Excellent question, Rob. No?
Dr. Hillman, there's a state law that says the state of Minnesota will balance its budget at the exit of the year. Some years ago, they balanced the budget based on the backs of the school districts. Is there any new legislation that'll prevent that from happening again?
Not only is there not new legislation, I think we should all expect it. So I fully expect a shift that you're referring to, where we get--
Yes.
--we will drop from the percentage of dollars that we get in the year that it was earned, if you will, to the next year. So you know that we're at 90-10, and we've shifted a number of different ways. I fully expect that there will be a shift next year, and we're, one of the things that we're considering as part of our legislative platform for a number of the organizations that we belong to is, you know, arguing to try to have some kind of increase to the base formula that gives us a little bit more of a longer-term understanding of our finances. If they're going to shift, we'd rather have them shift and give us something on the formula than get nothing on the formula and a shift as well. So we're trying to look at it in that perspective, and we're already starting our lobbying efforts.
Great question.
Thank you.
Great questions. Other questions, comments? I had one question where the governor, and I believe the dollars he is talking about was after this document was created, because I think in his plan, he just talks about pair dollars. But one interesting for allocation is 60% by the number of historically underserved students each school supports. Is that FRP? Is that title? It was just interesting the way it was worded, and I wondered if there was some other calculation being used for those dollars, which I think are like 380,000?
I have not seen that particular calculation yet, but that term would typically refer to free and reduced lunch price students.
Okay. Ellen, questions, I'm sorry, questions or comments on the financial update?
No, so, all right, I was shaking my head, I don't have a question.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, so that takes care of our items for discussion and report. We can move on to the consent agenda. There were some personal items in the table file added to the consent agenda. So is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Rob. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on now to items for individual action. We have four of them this evening. We'll begin with the approval of the handbook for 2020-2021 policies that were reviewed at our last board meeting. So is there a motion to approve the 2020-2021 hand-in-hand handbook and policies 401, 402, and 407 as presented? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Questions or comments? Okay. I see Ellen is shaking her head, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our second item is the resolution relating to the election of school board members. So is there a motion to approve the resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school board election?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Any questions or comments on this motion? This is a resolution, so it will require a roll call vote. Anita?
Veronica?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Strattonon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our third item for individual action is the resolution for adopting a base learning model. I will read the resolution and then ask for a motion and a second. And I would like to read the resolution in its entirety. Whereas Minnesota State Statute 123B.09 vests the care, management, and control of independent districts in the school board. And whereas the superintendent of independent school district 659, Dr. Matthew Hillman, herein after, noted as the superintendent is responsible for management of the schools, the administration of all school district policies, and is directly accountable to the school board. And whereas where responsibilities are not specifically prescribed nor school district policy applicable, the superintendent shall use personal and professional judgment, subject to review by the school board pursuant to school district policy 302 superintendent. Whereas on March 13th, 2020, Minnesota Governor Tim Walz issued emergency executive order 20-01, which declared a peacetime emergency in Minnesota in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas on July 30th, 2020, Minnesota Governor Tim Walz issued emergency executive order 20-82 and the Safe Learning Plan for 2020-2021, which set forth five learning models: in-person learning for all, in-person learning for elementary students, and hybrid learning for secondary students, hybrid learning for all students, hybrid learning for elementary students, and distance learning for secondary students, and distance learning. And authorize all school districts in the state of Minnesota to select and implement an appropriate base learning model in accordance with and subject to the Safe Learning Plan. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Ed, MDE, has issued and may continue to issue written guidance for Minnesota schools on educational issues related to COVID-19. Whereas the Minnesota Department of Health, MDH, has issued and may continue to issue written guidance for Minnesota schools on public health issues related to COVID-19. And whereas the superintendent and the administration of the school district have conferred with the school board regarding the available learning models, the current MDE and MDH requirements for each and other relevant information. And based upon the collective consideration of these factors, the superintendent has recommended to the school board that the school district finalize its decision about the base learning model to be implemented at the commencement of the 2021 school year based on the Rice County infection rate per 10,000 residents and the guidance provided by MDE and MDH. Now, therefore be it resolved by the school board of independent school 659 as follows: The superintendent is hereby directed, after consultation with the school board chair and notification to the school board, to select and implement the base learning model for the school district or any specific school buildings based on the Rice County infection rate per 10,000 residents, while considering any other mitigating factors identified in consultation with Rice County Public Health, the Minnesota Department of Health, and/or the Minnesota Department of Education. The decision about the base learning model should be made and communicated with families on or around August 17th, 2020. Section 2, the superintendent is hereby authorized, after consultation with the school board chair and notification to the school board, to select and implement a different learning model for the school district or any specific school buildings without school board action if the superintendent reasonably believes that prompt implementation of a different learning model is necessary, and that constraints of time and public health considerations render it impractical to hold a school board meeting to approve the implementation. The learning model selected and implemented by the superintendent can, shall continue in effect unless and until the school board, in consultation with the superintendent and its appropriate school district staff and public health officials, deem it in the best interest of the school district and its students to implement a different learning model. The superintendent will provide regular updates to the school board regarding the school district's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by MDE and MDH respectively. So that is the resolution. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Rob. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Questions, comments on the resolution? Amy?
I just have a question about how it separates out schools from the district so you can make decisions based on a school level? And I'm wondering what sort of scenario might happen where you would choose to do something for a specific school that's different from the rest of the district?
So the example that the Department of Health has given is that it's possible in a district that has, in our district, for example, if there was an outbreak at one elementary school, but the other elementary schools were, had not experienced that, it's possible that one of our elementary schools could shift to distance learning for a period of time until that infection was under control and then could revert back. So it's the possibility to understand that each, even within a district, each school could be different, and we may have to make different decisions based upon the conditions at that school.
Thank you. Ellen, do you have any questions on the resolution?
I do not.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is a resolution that requires a roll call vote?
Veronica?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Strattonon?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Our last item for individual action was a table file item, which is the modification to the school calendar. Dr. Hillman, if you wanna just explain quickly the change to the school calendar?
Yes. So we have talked extensively about the need for these family conferences at the beginning of the school year, running September 8th through the 11th. And so in order to formally make that happen, it is my recommendation that we adopt a change to the school calendar to recognize that those dates will not be traditional student contact days. So the key thing is that we would reduce our student contact days from 174 to 170 this year. I think that the, what we're going to gain out of those family conferences will be instrumental in making sure that those 170 days are the best spent that we can during a pandemic. Want to also call out the fact that, remember, we are nine days above the minimum of the 165 days required by the state of Minnesota. At the next meeting, I'll be presenting to you, believe it or not, the 2020-21 e-learning plan that will govern how we would handle snow days. And so even if we were to have some snow, we have a plan to be able to address that and continue learning as we know we did that two years ago. And now with the extensive work that we've had in distance learning, we feel even more prepared to handle that. So it is not, in my judgment, it is not appropriate to call September 8th through the 11th traditional student contact days, because they are not. They are very important, but we just need to adjust the calendar to reflect those family conferences.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to approve the revision to the 2020-2021 school year calendar as presented? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Rob. Questions or comments? Rob?
So, under this plan, we're losing four contact days.
Correct.
Earlier, you talked about that you would have five days to pivot--
Yep.
--from one learning model to the other. Do those count against the learning, the contact days?
They count as contact days. So what we, the guidance is, is that you can use up to five student contact days that remain counted as student contact days to do any kind of pivot that you need to do. You don't have to use all five, but you could use up to five, and they still remain counting as student contact days.
Other questions or comments? Ellen, do you have a question or comment on the calendar revision?
I do not.
Okay. One thing that I noted from Nancy Antoin talking about how, well, and the other principals as well, talking about how valuable the closing conferences were, I would imagine that these conferences and this opportunity for a teacher to meet one-on-one with the student and their family, I think will be really time well spent. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. No more questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We'll move on now to items for information. We have filing for school board happening. Dr. Hillman?
Yes.
For school board elections, excuse me.
So we have filing for school board that is open through tomorrow, August 11th. It opened on July 28th. It's in the district office. The affidavit of candidacy must be filed with the school district clerk at a $2 filing fee paid prior to 5 o'clock tomorrow, August 11th. And what we are asking is that anyone who would like to file for school board would contact Anita Ozzy. Her information is on the school district website, it's also on the doors leading up to the school. As of this point, I wanna share that we have had eight people file, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. So the eight candidates who have filed as of now are Noel Strattonon, Amy Gerwitz, Robert Coleman, Claudia Gonzalez George, Cory Butler, Eric Lundeen, Karen Jensen, and Justin Merritt. So we will have eight candidates for four positions on the November ballot. And again, that filing is available through tomorrow. And then if there are people who had filed and they would like to rescind their filing, they can do so through Thursday at 5:00 p.m. And again, we ask that they make an appointment with Anita, should that be the case. Did I miss anything, Anita?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Our next item for information is construction update number 30. Dr. Hillman?
We have a very exciting construction update, because last Tuesday, we took possession of the new Greenville Park Elementary School. We have held the groundbreaking-- We have held the groundbreaking 329 days before that taking possession. And they set the first steel column on November 26th, 218 days before we took possession. They set the, or they had started the exterior stud framing and sheath commencing. They poured the first slab on grade on January 31st. I won't go through all of the list of different things. The point is, it is an amazing facility that mixes both practicality with a warm and welcoming learning environment filled with light and something that we are hoping students can really enjoy this year. They also estimate that 40% of the construction schedule was conducted during the pandemic. And so we cannot thank Knutson Construction as our construction managers enough. Their previous experience working at Mayo Clinic allowed them to shift very quickly to be able to have COVID mitigation efforts on-site, and they've just had an incredibly successful run there. Still, it's not like it's completely done. There's some punch list items, there's some other things that are being finished up in the next several weeks. You saw Sam Richardson present to us tonight from his office. Something that I do want to share with you is, let's see if I can share the screen here too. I'm going to show you the entire duration. So just give me one moment, I want to share this screen. So this is a video going back to just after the groundbreaking. It's a couple of minutes, but it is absolutely worth watching. See, the gym has gone up there. There's no exciting music with us. I can do that on my own for you, but I won't bother you like that. That's a real footage. I mean, it almost looks like it was a CGI, but it's gorgeous. So I think that that's a pretty impressive building. Couple of things, if you see Jim Colseth or Jonah Hennig, Jonah's the head custodian at Greenville Park, on Tuesday of last week, they, Wednesday, one day last week, they took all of the pallets of things that were packed at the existing building, the Northfield Community Education Center, most of it was stored in the gym. And in one day, with only two hours total of overtime, they moved everything, I mean everything, from the existing building into the new building. And so if you see Jim, thank him for his work, thank Jonah for her work. They have just done amazing through the whole project. So not only are we trying to prepare for a year that will be unlike any other where buildings and grounds is a big part of it, they have continued in an excellent manner, a building that this community will be incredibly proud to see. And we look forward to having, developing some kind of ribbon-cutting approach, some kind of tours as the public health condition turns to be safe enough for people from the public to come and take a look at the building. And so we're just so thrilled with the finishing that this building has taken place. There were a lot of people who were like, there is no way that's going to be ready, you know, for next year. And those of you who are involved in the project oversight committee know that I joked often about April 1st, 2nd, or 3rd, and we took possession of it on April 3rd. So very impressive work by Wold and by Knutson Construction. The inspiration that was provided to us by our students and our staff and our families, I think of that groundbreaking 329 days, well, it'll be now 335 days ago, and just the energy that was around that, and we are almost there. The Sibley Project, again, looking phenomenal. The addition is basically complete. They're finishing the renovation inside of the building. I toured that just last week as well, really working on track. And of course, the Northfield Community Education Center, we've always known that one was going to be the tightest timeframe, but we do anticipate taking possession of that in a few weeks. So that is your construction update for this evening, and I hope that you enjoyed that drone footage because pretty cool stuff.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments, construction updates? Amy?
I'm envisioning a 100-foot-long ribbon for us all to socially distance and cut it at the same time. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Doing the math, it might have to be even longer, right?
Ellen, do you have any questions or comments?
No, but it's just nice to have this get at the end of the meeting to recognize all the work that the construction crews and Jim and, you know, we've been talking about so many other unprecedented pieces, but at the same time, you know, the work that's being done in all of these buildings and the leadership team thinking about that, and I just think it's wonderful. And so thank you for sharing the video. I think it helps us to put that part in perspective of, you know, student learning, and it's exciting.
No?
I live in that area, and a number of walkers go past the school and eventually past my property. And the common comment they make is the integration of the two buildings. It doesn't look like two buildings, it looks like a campus. And it is a tribute to the design group and the construction teams. They did a great job.
Absolutely agree, Noel.
Excellent. Well, and Sibley as well, the addition, well, and Bridgewater, they look like they've been there since, you know, inception of the building. Jeff, you had a comment?
So how would the announcement of, you know, the ceremony of whatever and plaques and whatever, when would that come about? And then also opportunities for the public for general tours?
Yeah, so we're just really trying to watch this. Once we start school, we are going to limit, actually not have any nonessential visitors. So Jeff, we're going to be doing, actually, we're going to start doing some careful thought about that with the project oversight committee tomorrow. What we can promise people is we will get people in there as soon as we are able to do so in a safe of a practicable manner without, you know, potentially having any kind of issues with the running of the school day. So I wish I could say, yep, it'll be in this time at this date, but we're just going to have to have some patience until we can get people. In the meantime, we'll do creative things like sharing the drone footage and some other, they'll do another Matterhorn. If you remember the Matterhorn document that they put together, it's an interactive, where you can almost walk through the building. They take thousands of photos, and you can actually walk through the building almost like it's a street view. So we'll look at the different kinds of things that we're able to do creatively to engage the public. But we're just, unfortunately, it's a wait and see.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, just in time, whatever our plan is.
Of course.
Excellent. Tom?
I live in that neighborhood too, and I drive by that building every day, and it's gorgeous. I encourage everybody to just drive by and see, you know, what your taxpayers, what your tax money paid for. It's really a nice, modern building.
Excellent, thank you. I agree, it's a really great way to end the meeting, talking about the amazing construction and projects we're able to do with the support of the community. So with that, future meetings, Monday, August 24th, and Monday, September 14th, both at 7:00 PM. And we will, at this point, determine that it will likely be feasible that we'll be able to meet here in this same, in this same format, but we would obviously announce that closer to those dates. So before I adjourn, I do want to thank Bruce for his great work tonight with the technology. I just thought it was, the room setup was great, and I think the audio was wonderful, and then the presentations coming in on Zoom. And I know Bruce and Matt were here for a large part of the afternoon getting this together. So now that we have the template and the format, I think it was very successful, and I appreciate all the time to get this meeting to run so well. Okay, so with that, I asked for a motion to adjourn by Noel, moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.